To the rules and procedures that will follow for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you are acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied. It just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the building department before your go-ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on the new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on the scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property, but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the writ consent of the new owner or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone who would need an adjournment? Please rise and join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First application is application 22-232 of Donna Theodosis, property located in Deer Park. Name and address for the record.
Andrew Brom, 1924, Belmore Avenue, Belmore, New York, 11710.
Okay. Would you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 28, 2023, environmental control memo dated February 27, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Thomas Matarazzo dated September 8, 2017, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, we have 25 pictures of the site plan by Andrew Brom dated October 11, 2022.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrew Brom. I'm an engineer. I'm representing Donna Theodosis tonight. We were previously here in front of the board two meetings ago, and we failed to have an affidavit of posting, which we now took care of for this date. And since that time, the application changed slightly, whereas we're still requesting the 37 point, I think it's 1 or 2 percent, where 20 percent is permitted. However, the swimming pool itself was issued a permit as of right at a smaller pool, which did not require a variance so that the homeowners could get started with the swimming pool. And now we're here before you requesting the same variance for the same coverage. I do have an updated drawing that I have a full size, an 11 by 17. Which one would you prefer for me to submit to you for review?
We need the, we need the updated.
The updated full size? So I've given you three copies, and you will note on the plan that there is a three-foot border around the property of planting, and the pavers do not go all the way up to the patio, which was a concern that the board had at the previous hearing. So just to reiterate, in the previous application, we had 37 percent, which is all of the pavers that you see here. That has not changed. I repeat, it has not gone over, it has not gone under. The amount stays the same. The only thing that changed is now the swimming pool is 16 by 40, whereas when we were here with the original application... The swimming pool itself was 20 by 46, but the overall lot coverage remains the same. So it's just the pool size shape.
More pavers.
More pavers in the same area, less swimming pool area. And again, I'm going to repeat, I know the board is very sensitive to not paving all the way up to the property line, and also likes to see and have some screening happening. So we do show a proposed three-foot plant or bed around the perimeter of the property. The pool meets and exceeds all of the New York State codes and standards for a swimming pool, and if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Coretia.
Okay, I see that the new plot plan is what the planning board was asking for, which is acceptable. I do have one question. There is two garage, two front doors on the home. One where the garage door was, where the garage doors were, there is a regular entry door? Is that for the purpose of an accessory apartment or anything to that effect?
Not that I'm aware of. The homeowner's not here tonight, but from my speaking with them, I do not believe they have an accessory apartment.
Okay.
Is it a living space? Is it living, is it converted living space?
I'm unaware of that, as my scope of work was the pool and the outside.
So we're just here for the variance on the pool tonight?
Yeah.
All right. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 22-232 as amended with the new plot plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Can we just, for the record, put new plot plan with pool size of 16 by 40?
As amended with the new plot plan, with the pool size being 16 by 40.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next application is application 23-004 of Donna Giglio, property located in West Babylon.
Is that Donna Capo?
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm sorry. Has both names, AKA Donna Capo. Yes.
I'm Donna Capo, AKA Donna Bagley.
I need your name and address, too.
Donna Capo, 1004 Bluff Strive North in Calverton.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 21, 2023, environmental control memo dated February 27, 2023. Sorry. Suffolk County Planning Memo dated February 28, 2023. If approved, this decision of a local determination. Survey by Jason Lettingham dated November 9, 2022, tax map acting as an area map, and...
We have 13 pictures of the chairman.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Uh, yeah, I'm requesting a variance for, to increase the building area to 24.8 percent.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
Okay, so what triggered you to securing a CO for an existing patio? Okay. I drove by, it was very well kept.
Nicely maintained. I think we're good with it.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
All right. I make a motion to approve application number 22, 23-004.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next application is application 23-007 of Michelle Esposito, property located in North Babylon. Name and address for the record, please.
Ronald Coppola Architect, 63 Villasline Road, Babylon, New York.
Ma'am.
Michelle Esposito, 47 Villasline Road, Babylon, New York.
Do you both affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 21, 2023, environmental control memo dated February 27, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Michael K. Wicks dated August 23, 2022, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Mr. Chairman, we have four photographs and a site plan by Ronald Coppola dated December 12, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, can we just make an amendment for the tax map number for the record?
Sure. Oh, okay. So the tax, oh, okay, yeah. So the tax lot number should be 0100-162-4-41. Make amendment to change that to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Okay. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My client bought this house in 2011. Existing rear, there was an existing rear addition put on the house, but it was never filed. And there was an existing rear shed that was also constructed, but it was never filed. The original house is built in 1928 or earlier. The front covered porch was added in the 90s, so between the 90s and when she bought the house, they added this rear addition. The rear pool deck was built after the house was purchased. The rear covered porch was built a few years ago. We are currently proposing a second-floor master suite addition on top of the existing first-floor addition. We are asking permission to maintain the existing rear addition, covered porch, pool deck, and existing shed. We are just, we are seeking relief of a side yard setback of 9.16 feet, where 10 feet is required for the new second-floor addition, relief of .04 feet for side yard setback for the existing pool deck where six feet, sorry, yard back. Setback is required. We're also seeking relief of building area of 30 percent, which is required, to 40.74, which is over by 954 square feet. You know, as per planning, they wanted to cut the deck back two feet. It's, it would only leave a deck five foot six. It's too small to even get a chair up there and to have the kids play up there and jump in the pool. So we really don't really want to cut back the deck.
That's it?
Basically, that's it, yes.
All right. I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it was a very well held, kept, very well-kept home. Very, very nice. Where exactly, I can't tell by the pictures or the aerial photo, where exactly is the, the issue? Is on the west?
It's on the west side property line. It's probably about 10 feet from the back of the porch, the covered porch.
See it on the, on the survey here.
Yeah, the survey shows it more clearly.
What's on the other side of this?
A neighbor's, a neighbor who's...
No, 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 the other side of the pool.
It's all yard.
It's just yard, pavers and yard. It's a small property. The lot must have been subdivided.
Yeah, I can see that. It's a shame we didn't put it on the other side, though. The current concern is for your neighbors in the runoff and their, their privacy.
Yeah, they, they're fine with it because they're basically in Florida most of the time anyway.
What's next to the pool deck on their property?
All trees.
All just trees, shrubs?
Overhanging my pool. Tall trees.
It's very well screened. You can't even see her deck from the neighbor's yard if you're standing up there. Deck's only about 30 inches, two feet off the grade. The fence is six feet, and the bushes have to be about 10 feet high.
How far off the property line is it, did you say?
It's .04 feet.
In one corner, and then on the other corner, it's a little bit more.
Because it's not exactly parallel with the property. It's a little skewed.
See that, yeah. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 23-007 with the stipulation that if the deck ever be rebuilt, it'd be put in a conforming location.
It's fine.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application is application 23-256 of Chris Kazaza, property located in West Babylon.
Good evening.
Pull the mic down.
Kelly Bennett, 1257 Udall Road, Bay Shore, New York, 11706.
Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 21, 2023, environmental control memo dated February 27, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Michael K. Wicks dated September 25, 2022, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Mr. Chairman, we have seven photographs.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Kazaza, and we are, we made an application to the building department for a proposed full second-story dormer. So they've been wanting to do this for quite some time to gain the needed living space. So it's, it's a full second-story dormer over the existing footprint of the dwelling. So the first couple of variances that we are requesting is relief on front yard, side yard, and aggregate side yard setbacks, all of which are the existing setbacks of the current dwelling. So the front yard is currently at the 25.85. Our east side, side yard right now is the 9.6, and our total side yards are currently 24.3. So we're not creating any, any additional relief sought there. We are seeking approval for an increase in building area. We are over about 31, 32 square feet in terms of our building area. And we did find out that he has two unpermitted sheds, both which are seeking rear line and east side yard lot lines at 2.8 feet. And we did agree, they are in good condition right now, but he would 100% agree to put them back in a conforming location if they were to ever be, you know, removed. And then in terms of the other items, we are asking to maintain an existing second driveway and second curb cut at this property. Mr. Kazaza had had this second pervious driveway installed in 2014. So he is a retired handyman, and his tools and his tool truck are really his hobby. So he had installed this driveway as pervious specifically to, you know, still have the drainage and have it not look as though it was a second driveway. So I do have some additional pictures to show the board because depending on the season, you almost can't even tell it's there.
Yeah.
So after we reviewed the, you know, the planning memo, I did ask him if with this commercial vehicle, he claims that he moves it maybe once a month, if that. He had been parking it in the front of the house. So it almost looked, if you looked on Google, it looked like there was a car parked right on the front lawn. However, the driveway is there. So he did agree to put up like a six-foot or four-foot fence on the side and keep that parked where it is on this aerial shot, which would be behind the house. I know, I hadn't seen anything quite like that. You know, and he did it with such care and concern that it was pervious, so.
It looks like it. Like a makeshift.
Yeah, and it can absorb, you know, rainwater and...
Okay, so I, I, was that the conclusion of your presentation?
Pretty much. In a nutshell.
Because I did drive by today, and there was a vehicle parked on like a slab, asphalt slab, and then there was another vehicle parked, it looked like on the grass, but it's like this makeshift.
It's that driveway. So they do have an existing double-car paved regular driveway, but then they also have this single-car pervious driveway, and that was specifically installed for his, you know, commercial vehicle, which he still has with all his tools, even though he is retired.
Yeah, no, so there was like a ram truck on the grass area, and then there was a, probably the commercial vehicle on the asphalt towards the back of the house. So he will, he's willing to put a fence to...
He would be willing to put a fence up at that, where the existing garage line is, so that essentially if he was parking the van, it wouldn't be essentially on, on his front yard. It would be on the side yard of the house. But he would use that pervious driveway, obviously, to pull in.
Right.
Like where it is.
So it's almost like the side of the yard.
Yeah, right now. There's, if you look at the property survey, he has an asphalt area right, actually, I'm sorry, it's the opposite side of their attached garage. But so he would put up a fence right from the house line to the property line and keep it parked back there. So these were things that came up, and, you know, obviously, the, you know, the dormer was what we were proposing.
So currently, right now, there's not even a curb cut, so he's driving over the sidewalk.
So I looked at more recent pictures, and that, I'd have to do a little bit more digging. I don't know if that was the sidewalk from pulling it. But it does look, it's not a large curb cut, but if you look, there is a slight curb cut there.
Okay.
That's, that's why that, that it's actually part of our, you know, denial, and we're seeking relief for it. So he does have...
Okay, and currently, there, the two sheds, neither one can be moved to a conforming location?
He wanted to, you know, ask for this grant as they are now and agreed to relocate them in the future. But, you know, again, if he, if he doesn't get approved, he'd have no choice to, you know, but to put them in a conforming location.
Okay. I have no further questions.
You, you were all having the same reaction I had when I first saw the, the photos of the driveway. I haven't ever seen this yet. And in the summer, in the spring, it looks like, you know, regular grass.
Just grass. Yeah, because when I drove by, I could hardly see it.
You can really only see a hint of the pavers in like fall and winter.
How many, so he's got a two-car driveway already existing, right?
Yep.
And...
He did this...
How many cars, excuse me, how many cars does he have?
They, they have a larger family, so they have their regular four cars within the family, and he kind of did this to get out of the family's way, essentially, with his...
His house. Shouldn't they be getting out of his way? Must be. What size is this commercial vehicle?
You know, I, I wanted to ask him that. I, I feel like when we measured it online, it was about 15, you know, feet. It's like a large white work van.
It's a box truck?
Box truck with a, you know, but with a commercial plate. It's like the smallest of box trucks, but is a commercial vehicle.
What was he retired from, if you don't mind me asking?
He was a retired carpenter and handyman.
If he's retired, he's retired, right?
He loves his tools. He loves his tools and their own van.
Bring him in the house, he can sleep with him.
He had to get the tools out, I guess, as well as the van or the double sheds, I don't know.
Where's the truck? Keep the tools.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decisions. You'll get the decision.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You're toast. Next application is application 23-005 of Canessa Corporation, care of Gloria Fuentes, property located West Babylon. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Gloria Fuentes, under Canessa Corporation, 702 Sixth Street in West Babylon, New York, New York, 11704.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 21, 2023, environmental control memo dated February 27, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Thomas Zawala dated October 17, 2022, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Mr. Chairman, we have four photographs and a site plan by Joseph A. Bello dated October 7, 2022.
So we need to amend the application on variance number two. It should be total building area from 30 percent to 44.38. It should be total building area from 30% to 44.38% over by 1950.4 square feet. And, okay, that's it. Second. One in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to tell us about the application? What would, what would you like to tell us about your application?
Oh, about my application is, is, I'm calling a dormer. There was already two room, but there was two skylight. One, it was leaky, I just bought the house. So and then I changed my mind, I said I want to put windows. So I removed the skylight. So now I increased the wall, that's all I'm doing. And now I call it dormer now, but there's two room already was before, so. I just removed the two skylights that was before. And area windows, big windows, no more, no more skylights. And one side, and the other, the front side is still skylight.
Turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
Okay, when did you put the cellar entrance in?
There was already, I, I.
It was there when you purchased the house?
Yes, it was there, but it was, it was a big mess in the house because it was a foreclosed house.
Okay.
It was a lot of trees over there, so you don't even see.
Okay.
So when I started cleaning it up, I saw that and then I, and the fence is still old, almost driving the floor, you know, I got to fix it all that. So I've been, you know, working a little bit, but I need to fix it, you know, and make it nice, you know?
Okay, was the pool there when you purchased the house as well?
Yeah, it was, everything was there.
Okay.
Have counsel when you closed on the house? Did you have an attorney?
No, it, it was a foreclosure when.
Ah, it was a foreclosure, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
When, when did you purchase the house?
It was on September 8th or 9th, believe.
Last year?
Yeah, last year, yeah.
Oh, you just, okay.
Yeah, I knew, I knew, I knew.
You've purchased a lot of problems. Okay, so the patio, we need it cut back at least two feet from the property line. Right now it's on the property line, where the pool is.
Uh-huh. Okay, so I got it correct.
Yeah, you got to cut it back. Take up some of the patio.
Okay.
Okay?
On the inside and rear.
On the north and the rear side.
Oh, and the wall?
Yeah.
Oh.
So it's like.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, I didn't know, okay.
Um, let me see. Patio. The shed. Okay, okay, and the shed is still back there, yeah?
It's still there, yeah.
Are you using it? Are you using it or are you going to get rid of it?
I still use it, but I got to fix it because it's really old, I got to fix it.
Okay.
But they told me I don't need a permit because it's eight by eight, they told me. So they told me, someone told me I don't need a permit for that.
I.
It's a small one.
It's eight by eight, but I think it's too close to the property line.
Oh, so I got to move to?
It, are you going to rebuild it? If you're going to rebuild it, then you can move it to a conforming location.
I'm going to, I was planning to keep it that one and make another one smaller because that one is really small. You only can put it like a machine to put the grass, so it's really small.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really small. It's not big because the property is really small, you know?
Yeah.
It's not a big, doesn't have it length, you know?
Let me see.
You need a permit because your corner lot, we have two front yards.
Yeah.
So that's why it's coming up, even though it's under 100 square feet, you have to be 40 feet from your front street line.
Oh, you, oh. Oh, you still need a permit, oh. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you'll get a permit?
I got to apply for that because, I asked over here, they told me you don't need it, so I didn't know about that because I'm in the corner.
Okay.
I can hear.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're going to close the hearing, we're going to reserve decision. You'll get the decision in the mail.
We would need revised plans if they're cutting back.
Oh, yeah. So you have to give us revised plans showing where you're cutting back the patio so that we can see that that is legal at that point, okay?
Oh, okay. Do you know how much I got it correct?
At least two feet.
Two feet, two feet, okay, okay.
Okay.
So I got to wait how long? I got to do it first or I going to wait for the?
You're going to cut it back and you're going to send us new plans, and on those plans, it'll show that there's at least two feet on the property lines.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Where are you from?
Oh, me?
Locally?
Yeah.
Us too.
Okay, next application is application 23257 of MPK Mac Inc., property located in West Babylon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Nicole Blanda. I'm an attorney at Bizel Blanda and Visconti with offices at 535 Broad Hollow Road in Melville.
Thank you. For the record, we have a planning division memo dated February 21st, 2023. Certificate of occupancy dated 8/20/68. Department of Environmental Control memo dated March 1st, 2023. If this were to be approved, it needs a neg deck. Survey by Lawrence Michael Haynes dated August 5th, 2021. Tax map acting as an area map and?
We have five photographs, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner. We're seeking variances in connection with a two-family home in a business zone and associated site improvements. The property is located on the north side of Sunrise Highway Service Road, west of Magaw Place in West Babylon. As I said, it is zoned business E. It has a lot area of approximately 7,500 square feet. Historically, it was used as a two-family home and does have a CO, as the chairman stated, from 1968, and it was also indicated on the CO that it had a ZBA approval when it was subdivided to permit a two-family home at the time. So historically, the site was used in that way. More recently, it was used as a residence with an office. My client purchased the property in the summer of 2020 and had started to set about doing some renovations to the building when he was brought in for site plan review. So the application itself went through extensive departmental review, meaning each town department reviewed it, commented on it, and it was thought that this would be a better application rather than going mixed use. It would be better to revert it back to the two-family house that it had always been since the late 60s. We did have our planning board hearing on November 14th of 2022. It went well, there was no neighbor opposition at that time, and all of the departmental memos seemed supportive of the application, as does tonight's planning department memo. So the applicant is seeking to renovate the existing building and have two units in it. We, residential use is not permitted within the business district, so we do require a variance to permit that use, but this is a little bit different than a normal use variance in that it did have a prior CO for a two-family, and so I believe that the planning department was viewing it more of as a non-conforming use that we were trying to go back to. The entire site will be upgraded, so new drainage for the entire site, brand-new parking lot. It will look a lot better than what it looks like right now. We do meet the parking requirement of two spaces per unit. There will be two spaces located in the front of the property and two spaces located in the rear. There'll be a new concrete drive apron, new landscaping at Front Street and along the rear of the property. There's a nice buffer provided back there between our site and the residential. Most of our rear site actually hits the dead end of Baywood Street, and we do have quite a deep rear yard provided. So I actually think this is a good transitional zoning for the commercial corridor of Sunrise Highway and then those residences that are actually behind us, to have this be a residential use versus commercial. We are requesting a variance to diminish the buffer strip on the west side of the property, but that's only in the front yard. I just want to point out to the board, it really is approximately an 18-foot run, but the depth on that side is 115 feet. So we're really seeking a variance to go from five feet to zero feet for the buffer along those 18 feet, not along the entire stretch of the depth of the property. And by doing so, it allows us to have those two parking spaces. We are also requesting a front yard setback variance from 45 feet to 28 feet 4 inches. 45 feet is a business zone requirement. The building is existing, so it's not going to look any different to people who are passing by, and the planning department memo does note that there are varying front yard setbacks along Sunrise Highway Service Road, so certain properties were actually in line and then maybe in other properties were not in line. We are upgrading the interior and exterior. Each unit has an open floor plan with three bedrooms, a full bath, and a washer dryer. For the first floor unit, you would enter through the covered porch, and for the second floor unit, you would enter through the rear covered entry. So those spaces in the back would be for that second floor unit, the two spaces in the front would be for the first floor unit. There are properties abutting the site to the east and west that are also zoned business E. To the west is a garage door business. I believe that more recently it was approved as a mixed use by this board in 2022. And then to the, to the east is a plumbing and HVAC business, as well as a U-Haul storage business. Like I said, we are providing an ample buffer in the rear, we're not seeking any other variances, and we do agree there was a condition requested in the planning memo that the basement be unfinished storage use only as per the site plan, and we have no issue with that condition, that's fine with us. And as I said, we did go to planning board already. I believe there's just some open comments that they're waiting on revisions for. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
You pretty much answered all my questions. It is a great eyesore over there, so whatever.
Yes. It needs, it needs some love.
It needs some love. I'm surprised you guys are keeping the structure because it looked like it's like torn down and needs to be totally.
And that was initially what happened, what the renovations had started, and then the applicants didn't realize they had to go in for site plan review, so.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. It looks pretty good.
Make a motion to, to, to say again, I'm sorry, anybody can be heard. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Would anybody like to be heard on this application? I knew that, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve, adopt a negative declaration on application 23257. Second. One in favor?
Aye.
I'm making a motion to approve application 22-257 with the condition that the basement be unfinished storage.
Second. One in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a great night, guys.
You're to. Next application is application 23006 of RGP Owners DP LLC, property located in Deer Park. It's an Applebee's, okay. Name and address for the record?
Hansley Mohan, Brown Alt Mendilio, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747.
Okay. We have a planning division memo dated February 21st, 2023. Environmental control memo dated February 28th, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A, what this is? A site, I can't, yeah, that's unreadable. A site plan by R&amp;M Engineering dated December 2nd, 2020. Tax map acting as an area map. A rendering for the canopy that says Applebee's to go over the door. This is a sign? Okay, we'll get to that, I'm not sure what that is. And?
Chairman, we have 12 photographs and a site plan by James Gilmore dated November 21st, 2022.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, RGP Owners DP LLC, in connection with the signed variance application number 23-006 for the Applebee's of the property. Please note that we are also appearing tonight on behalf of the same applicant in connection with the second signed variance application, ZBA number 22-251, for the Panera Bread at the same property. In the interest of time and with the board's permission, I would like to present both applications together.
Oh, so that's, okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. Let me read, just let me read in the, the next application. It's application 22251. It's dated February 21st, 2023. Property is located in Deer Park. Environmental control memo dated February 28th, 2023. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. There is. Looks like a site plan by American Engineering and Land Surveying dated August 25th, 2014. There was also a survey by R&amp;M Engineering dated 12/8/20. Tax map acting as an area map and?
Mr. Chairman, there's no pictures, but it's also a site plan by James Gilmore dated April 27th, 2022.
Would you like to tell us about the applications?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, I have prepared exhibit packages for the board's review. Would like to hand them up now. While it's being handed out. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of the board. With me tonight, on my left, is Christopher Robinson of R&amp;M Engineering, the project engineer. Mr. Robinson is available to answer any questions that the board may have. By way of background, the property is a pad site within the shopping center located at 409 Comac Road in Deer Park. The total size of the shopping center is approximately 724,979 square feet, or 16.6 acres in area, and is located at the northeastern corner of the signalized intersection of Grand Boulevard and Comac Road. To the north of the property, across Arches Drive, is a Home Depot. To the west, across Comac Road, is gasoline service station, a Lidl supermarket, a tile store, a miniature golf course, and a Citibank. To the south, across Grand Boulevard, is a 7-Eleven convenience store, seafood restaurant, and small shopping center. All of the aforementioned properties are located within the town's GA light industrial district. On August 1st, 2022, the applicant received town planning board approval to convert the vacant 5,655-square-foot Ruby Tuesdays building into a 90-seat Panera Bread with a drive-thru service and a 26-seat Applebee's, along with associated site improvements. A copy of the town planning board approval resolution has been submitted as exhibit one. Tonight, the applicant requests the following signed variances for the Applebee's use of the property. To permit three wall/entrance signs on the southern elevation of the building where a maximum of one wall or entrance sign is permitted. The applicant also requests the following signed variances for the Panera Bread use of the property. To permit two wall signs on the northern elevation of the building where a maximum of one wall sign per wall is permitted. To permit two wall signs on the southern elevation of the building where a maximum of one wall sign is permitted. To permit two wall signs on the western elevation of the building. To permit a total of 10 wall signs at the property where a maximum of four wall signs per parcel is permitted. And finally, to permit five menu and clearance signs where a maximum of one ground sign is permitted. We submit that the requested variances for the wall signs on the northern, southern, and western elevations of the building will not produce an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, as the proposed wall signs will only face motorists traveling along Grand Boulevard and Comac Road, which are public streets. In response to the planning memorandum, the quantity of the proposed wall signs is necessary for adequately advertising the goods and services offered at the property. for adequately advertising the goods and services offered at the property. The Panera Bread sign advertises the use while the drive-through and rapid pickup sign advertises the drive-through service. The two signs together are essential for attracting motorists to the site, which ensures the long-term financial viability of the site. In order to adequately advertise to motorists traveling along Grand Boulevard, Comac Road, and throughout the shopping center, the signage is placed along the northern, western, and southern elevations. Accordingly, we respectfully disagree with the notion by the planning department that these signs are, quote, "redundant." As stated on the sign permit denial and noted by the planning staff, relief is required to permit a total of 10 wall signs on the property. However, the total number of wall signs, when divided by each individual use, equates to seven wall signs for the Panera Bread and three wall signs for the Applebee's. One of the wall signs for the Panera Bread is located on the eastern elevation and is permitted as of right per the code. The quantity of the proposed wall signs are mitigated by their size, particularly the drive-through, rapid pickup signs. As shown on the sign plan submitted as Exhibit 2, the drive-through signage on the western and southern elevation are merely 20 inches in height and 80 inches in length. The drive-through sign on the northern elevation is only eight inches in height and approximately 45 inches in length. As with the Panera Bread use, the Applebee's wall signs will promote the restaurant to motorists along Grand Boulevard and are also essential for differentiating the two uses of the property. The Applebee's sign plans has been submitted as Exhibit 3. Given that this site will feature a to-go service for customers picking up their orders for the Applebee's, the separate signage is essential for advertising this additional service. Based on the signage and the multiple goods and services offered at the site, we submit that the required variance relief for the wall signs is not substantial, will not negatively impact the adjacent properties, and is consistent with similar relief granted by this board. For example, in ZBA decision number 17-058, the board approved a total of three wall signs on both the northern and western elevations of a convenience store for a total of six wall signs. Submitted as Exhibit 4 is a precedent chart for the board's reference. Similarly, we note that the requested variance to install a total of five menu and clearance signs is required for the drive-through service at the property. The pre-browsed menu boards and clearance signs collectively are essential for the safe and efficient operation of the drive-through, which in turn reduces lengthy queues. Such sign variance relief is standard for drive-through restaurants. In ZBA decision 22-169, this board approved a variance for a total of six ground signs for the side-by-side drive-through at the McDonald's. We note that planning raised no issues with this variance request in the memorandum. At this time, I'd like to call Chris Robinson of R&amp;M Engineering to discuss the site and proposed signage.
Good evening, Chris Robinson, R&amp;M Engineering, 50 Elm Street, Huntington, New York. I don't know much more I can add to it. Just a little bit of background. This board had seen this application... Oh, sorry.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do, of course. This board had seen this application previously for the Aspen Dental, which is right next door to this building. For those that don't know, this is the former Ruby Tuesdays restaurant. It was an over 200-seat restaurant that was here. They went out of business. The building's been vacant for a number of years. My client, RD Management, has been seeking to reoccupy this building, and the restaurant changed. The Darty Group is now about to open up the Applebee's To Go and the Panera. It is a related franchisee, even though there'll be the two uses within the building. So we're going from a 200-seat restaurant to a 90-seat and a 26-feet Applebee's To Go. And the signage, as Hansley laid out, is very clear. The rapid pickup and drive-through signs, I will add, they are actually an arrow, which points to people where to go around the side of the building to access the drive-through. For those that are familiar with Panera Bread, the drive-through scenario at a Panera Bread is a fairly new item. So directing customers that may come to the Panera and have a sign on it that says there is a drive-through on the back is very helpful to guide them into this new type of use, which came out, frankly, during the COVID, where these fast casual restaurants have taken a lot more opportunity to have drive-through where people don't want to go sit down inside, they'd rather pick up their lunch on the outside. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have. We're very familiar with the shopping center. We've represented RD Management on this shopping center for 15, 16 years. It's the Coles Shopping Center in front of Tanger Outlet Center, if anybody doesn't know the specific location.
Let me ask this. Is there any way to cut back some of this signage?
There's a lot of signs.
A lot of signs.
Yeah, I do understand. I mean, the ground signs are all really traffic signs, small signs that you'd have on the ground. It just kind of lays out which lane to go in, and advising the motorists to merge together and to allow the person in the rapid pickup lane to merge in with the general pickup at the window. We can, you want to talk about the signs on the building?
Like a training sauce for the DMV, it looks like.
It's pretty much.
Let me ask you this, too. So does the drive-through serve both Applebee's and Panera?
No. So the Applebee's To Go is a small version of Applebee's, which is just a takeout restaurant. People will put through the app, order their food, or they may do it through Uber Eats, or they may order this stuff for pickup. They put 26 tables in for convenience. If you pre-ordered your food and you went up and got it at the counter, and you decided not to go eat it in your car, or not to drive back to your office, we give them some tables and chairs to sit down and have their meal in. So the Applebee's is just an Applebee's To Go. You have to order your food and go there and get it. The Panera Bread, the drive-throughs are only associated with the Panera Bread. So looking at the picture that you have on the screen in front of you, the inside lane or the left lane is your traditional drive-through lane. You enter through it, there's a menu board, there's the order speaker, and you're asked to drive around to the pickup window. The lane on the outside is what we call a rapid pickup. So Panera has, again, an app, and you can order your food on it, or you can call up and order and have a rapid pickup. You're given a signal that your order is ready. You can get into the rapid pickup lane and come around, where we advise the drivers with some of the ground signs to allow the merger to occur, and they just hand you the food at the window, since the financial transaction has already occurred via the app or via online. So it's a standard drive-through window on the inside, the rapid pickup lane on the outside. We provide adequate bailout areas, so if you decided to get in the rapid pickup lane, but you really didn't get your signal yet to say your food's ready, we provide opportunities for someone to pull ahead. That's the lane with the arrow in it due north of the building to pull out, and we give them parking spots in front of the building where you can pull up to the spot, and they'll come out and give you your food at the car.
So you're saying this outside lane to pick up the food will merge with the inside lane through the window?
Yes. It merges right before the window, and they merge together.
And if they change their mind, they could use the escape route?
They can use the escape route, bail out, pull around the front of the building, and we have three rapid pickup parking spaces that are readily available. Someone could pull in there, and then they'll bring their food out, or go in and get it.
Got an HOV lane?
It's an HOV lane. It's the rapid pickup lane, it's the HOV lane.
A lot of activity in this one small location.
Well, we figured this was really a really good adapted reuse of the Ruby Tuesdays building, which was a 200-seat restaurant that had been there for a good number of years. And my client did try to reoccupy it with other restaurants, and there really was no interest here in doing that large of a restaurant. And this is a great adaptive reuse of the building.
So the Applebee's To Go is... To go, I see the area proposed in the building. The Applebee's To Go awning is right where that proposed walkway is in?
Yeah, so right there where your cursor is, just to the left of it, the awning, the door entering the building is right next to the demise.
So it's not anywhere, not involved with the drive-through at all?
Not at all.
It's a walk-up?
You hook up, you walk up inside the building. We do have a couple of parking stalls reserved outside for your Uber Eats cars that pull up and grab the orders and go deliver it.
Okay. My only comment is, we are a lazy society.
We're getting there. It sounds like it, yeah.
Anybody cook anymore? Forget about that.
And nobody walks. Nobody's walking to the restaurant anymore.
Are there any locations in Suffolk County for either of these establishments that we can kind of?
Suffolk County, yeah.
Or Nassau.
Or Nassau.
It's a split.
Selden?
Yeah, I get it.
Plainview and Nassau.
You're going to tell me what he said?
Plainview in Nassau County, Selden in Suffolk County.
Has both of these establishments there, or they have the Panera?
It's probably just the Panera Bread, the Panera Bread with the drive-through.
Just the Panera?
Just the Panera Bread with the drive-through.
Yeah. The Applebee's To Go is a more of a newer product.
Okay.
I saw some comments about a painted sign on the existing brickwork.
It wasn't part of our application, the color package that you have up on the board there. It was included in the building permit package for the building. It's really the Panera Bread logo, which is the woman's face with the blowing hair. They wanted to paint it on the brick wall on the drive-through side of the building, a little bit of what they call wall art to add it. We have, you know, if the board has a problem with, we'd have no problem removing that from the application.
Okay. Because I believe planning would like to have an additional variance.
I don't think we applied for it with the sign permits, so it wouldn't be part of this. Yeah, we're willing to remove that from the plan.
Okay. Well, we'll have to try it out when it opens up. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? You ladies and gentlemen, what application are you guys here for? I'm assuming you're all together?
The Bola, the Bola gas station?
The Bola, okay, that's coming. Okay. 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 All right, ready. Let me just get reorganized here. Lot of paperwork. Right. I'm going to do the Applebee's and then... Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve application 23006.
Second.
Five years, a period of five years. Any second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. My pen go. This is... There it is. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve application 22-251, with the condition that the painted sign not be applied to the concrete wall, to the brick wall.
Second.
Aye. Okay. Also for five years. It's also for five years. Five years also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So the next two applications are application 22245 and 22246, Bola Oil Corporation, property located in North Babylon. Can you, like, turn that? I mean, I know we want to see it, but they'd like to see it, too. Yeah, okay. Yep.
Hansley Mohan, Brown Alt Mendelio, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747.
Okay. For the record, we have a planning division memo on application 22245 dated February 21st, 2023. We also have environmental control memo dated March 1st, 2023. The comments are unchanged. Department of Environmental Control memo dated February 1st, 2023. If this application were to be approved, it would need a negative declaration. Suffolk County Planning memo dated January 19th, 2023, decision of local determination. Take no position for or against. On application 22246, we have a planning division memo dated February 28th, 2023. The same environmental control memo dated March 1st, 2023, and the same environmental control... Oh, this is the same. Yeah. All right. Copies of that. Let's see what else we have here. Um... I'm trying to handle these things. Survey by Goliath Surveying Group dated 2/27/19, maybe? Tax map acting as an area map, and what else we have?
Mr. Chairman, we have six photographs, a site plan by Christopher Tartaglia dated February 7th, 2022.
Presentation package. Okay. Well, what would you like to tell us about the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Bola Oil Corp., for applications number 22245 and 22246. Given that both applications pertain to the property located at 170 Bay Shore Road in North Babylon, I respectfully request that we be permitted to present the area and signed variance applications together.
Okay.
Thank you. Before I begin, I have another set of handouts for your...
Pleasure. Not one. You got what sets? Oh, yeah. I'll set. This is an extra. Do me a favor. Pass that to those ladies and gentlemen back there, please.
Mr. Chairman, before I begin, do we need to read the second application into the record?
Did I not read the second application? I thought I did. Application 22246 of Bola Oil Corporation, property located in North Babylon. Planning memo dated February 28th. Environmental control memo dated March 1st, 2023. No comments, remaining unchanged. And... This is the same Department of Environmental Control memo.
And six photographs.
And six photographs. Okay.
Thank you. With me this evening, to my right, is Chris Tartaglia of High Point Engineering, the project engineer. On my left is Amanda LaRosa of Stonefield Engineering, traffic safety expert. Both of our experts are available to answer any questions that the board may have. By way of background, the property is approximately 22,792 square feet in area and is located on the southeastern corner of the signalized intersection of Bay Shore Road and Comac Road. The property currently has three street frontages, which include Bay Shore Road to the north, Comac Road to the west, and Crown Street to the east. To the north of the property, across Bay Shore Road, is a small shopping center with a delicatessen, convenience store, and restaurant. The shopping center is split zone between the E-business and B-residence districts. To the east, along Bay Shore Road, are mostly residential properties located within the town's C-residence district. Traveling along Bay Shore Road to the west are residential and commercial properties, which include a physical therapist office, Carvel Ice Cream, shoe repair shop, and delicatessen. The shopping center is located within the E-business district, while the physical therapist office is in the E... I'm sorry, let me clarify. The shopping center is located within the EB-business district, while the physical therapist office is in the E-business district. Abutting the property to the south are two residences located within the C-residence district. On August 22nd, 2022, the Town of Babylon Planning Board approved our application to renovate the existing gasoline service station, and a copy of the Town Planning Board approval has been submitted as Exhibit 1. As shown on the site plan on the display board and also submitted as Exhibit 2 in the package provided, we are proposing significant improvements to the property that will greatly enhance the overall aesthetics of the site. We submit that these improvements will be a tremendous benefit to the surrounding neighborhood. I will defer to Mr. Tartaglia of High Point Engineering for an in-depth discussion of the site plan. Before I proceed to discuss the requested variance relief, I would like to note for the board that we are withdrawing our request for a variance to permit the building height of 26 feet 2 inches. On February 1st, 2023, High Point Engineering submitted revised building elevations that reflect the updated building height, which is now in compliance with the town code.
So you want to amend the application to eliminate that variance?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to eliminate variance number one on application 22245.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That being said, tonight we are requesting the following area variances. First, to permit a front yard setback of seven feet on Crown Street, where a minimum of 15 feet is required. To permit a total of 10 parking stalls, where a minimum That being said, tonight we are requesting the following area variances. First, to permit a front yard setback of seven feet on Crown Street where a minimum of 15 feet is required. To permit a total of 10 parking stalls where a minimum of 13 stalls are required. To permit a front yard landscape buffer of zero feet along Bay Shore Road where a minimum front yard landscape buffer of 10 feet is required. To permit a front yard landscape buffer of seven feet along Crown Street where a minimum front yard landscape buffer of 10 feet is required. To permit the existing gasoline service station to be located on Bay Shore Road and Comac Road where such a use is only permitted along New York State Route 109, 110, or 27. And to permit zero driveways along Crown Street where a minimum of one driveway per front yard is required. We are also requesting the board's approval for the following sign variances. First, to permit a ground pylon sign with a setback of 2 feet 3 inches from the property line where a minimum setback of 10 feet is required. To permit a total sign area of 55.8 square feet for the ground pylon sign where a maximum of 40 square feet is permitted. To permit two signs per pole where a maximum of one sign per pole is required. To permit a price sign area of 53.9 square feet where a maximum price sign area of 12 square feet is required. To permit a ground pylon sign with a height of 26 feet 3 inches where a maximum height of 15 is required. And lastly, to permit three wall signs on the western elevation of the convenience store where a maximum of one wall sign per wall is permitted. Lastly, we are also requesting that the board lift the covenant and restrictions imposed on the property by the Town Zoning Board of Appeals in Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions dated April 20th, 1959. Pursuant to Certificate of Occupancy number 36486, the property has been developed with a gasoline service station since circa 1960. As previously noted, several other convenience store uses currently exist to the north and west of the property. Accordingly, we submit that the Bola Market Convenience Store, as proposed, conforms to the commercial character of the area. As noted by the Planning Department in its memorandum, the convenience store is setback 18.5 feet from Bay Shore Road, and there is a 15-foot landscape buffer to the south. There will also be landscaping on both corners along Crown Street and Comac Road. The location of the property's northern boundary line makes it unduly burdensome to comply with the required landscape buffer requirement along Bay Shore Road. Strict compliance would require a complete redesign of the site, including the relocation of the underground tanks. Further, it should be noted that there will be green space located within the right-of-way. As mentioned in the planning memorandum, the parcel has a unique shape, which causes the buffer strip along Crown Street to taper toward Bay Shore Road. As a result, the front yard setback along Crown Street is seven feet at its closest point, but 20 feet at its furthest point. Given the particular shape of the lot, variance relief is required to permit the convenience store to be setback seven feet from Crown Street. It should also be noted that the site plan also calls for the installation of a six-foot-high PVC fence along Crown Street. As shown on the colored rendering submitted as Exhibit 3, the combination of the robust plantings and the PVC fence along Crown Street will more than make up for any deficiency in the required setback. Although variance relief is required to reduce the number of driveways along Crown Street, we submit that the intended closure of said curb cut is ideal not just for the applicant, but also the adjacent residential property owners along Crown Street. Closure of this driveway is necessary to accommodate the proposed convenience store and will also serve to reduce traffic from the site into the residential neighborhood. As previously stated, the property has operated as a gasoline service station since circa 1960. As such, variance relief is required to bring the property into compliance with the current provisions of the town code, which require that gasoline service stations be located only along New York State Routes 109, 110, or 27. As noted by the Planning Department, Comac Road and Bay Shore Road are larger commercial thoroughfares, and other gasoline service stations are already located along such roadways. Similar variance relief was granted by this board for gasoline service station on Comac Road in ZBA case number 21-157B. The site plan provides for 10 parking stalls, including 1 ADA stall. Strict compliance with the parking stall requirement under the town code would require a redesign of the overall site layout, which would disrupt the safe site circulation of vehicles at the property. A traffic impact study prepared by Stonefield Engineering has been submitted to the board as Exhibit 4. As will be discussed further by Amanda LaRosa, the study found that the parking stall count provided is sufficient to support the observed demand of the property. As shown on the sign plan submitted as Exhibit 5, the ID sign at the northwest corner of the site will be setback 2.3 feet from the property line. However, this variance is mitigated by the fact that the sign will be setback approximately 18 feet from the curb and 10 feet from the sidewalk. Also, this board has previously granted a similar setback variance for the ground sign at this property on November 17th, 2016. In ZBA decision number 16-229, this board approved a north setback of merely two feet. In the same decision, the board also granted variance relief to permit a total sign area of 49 square feet for the ID sign. The proposed ID sign will only be approximately seven square feet larger in size. When compared to what was previously approved, we submit that the variance for the sign area conforms to the commercial character of the area and is consistent with what has previously been approved for this property. As shown in the precedent chart submitted as Exhibit 6, the board has routinely granted variance relief to increase the number of signs per pole in similar applications. For example, in ZBA decision number 22-065, the board approved an ID sign with four signs on one pole. The variance for the price sign area is necessary to advertise the various types of fuel and fuel prices offered to motorists traveling along Bay Shore Road. In response to the Planning Department memo, we note that the proposed size of the price sign increases visibility and legibility to passing motorists and allows additional time for drivers to safely maneuver into the site. Further, it should be noted that similar relief was granted in application number 21-227. In that case, the board renewed variance relief permitting the increase of the price sign area from the required 12 square feet to 50 square feet. As noted in the planning memo, the board approved the ground sign with a height of approximately 20 feet 7 inches in ZBA case number 22-138. While we understand planning's concerns regarding the proposed height, we respectfully submit that the difference of approximately 5 and 1/2 feet is not significant and is more or less consistent with other gasoline service stations, such as the one mentioned by planning. Bay Shore Road is a prominent roadway that leads to and from Deer Park Avenue, and the applicant is making a major financial investment into the revitalization of the property. As the town is well aware, Bola represents the gold standard in terms of landscaping, site safety, and overall aesthetic value. The ID sign, as proposed, is essential to ensuring the long-term financial viability of the site by notifying passing motorists of the goods and services offered. As we all know, motorists are price shoppers. The average motorist is more concerned about the price per gallon than they are about whether it's a Shell or a Mobil. Given that it is the price and type of fuel that is most prominent to attracting customers, it flows logically that the price sign is extremely important to keeping the site thriving in the future. Moving to the wall signs, we submit that the variance to permit three wall signs on the western elevation of the convenience store is not substantial and will not adversely impact the adjacent property owners and is consistent with previously granted relief for similar applications. ZBA decision number 17-058 granted relief to permit a total of three wall signs on both the northern and western walls of the convenience store. With respect to our request to lift the previously imposed covenants and restrictions, we submit that there has been a significant change in circumstance since the CNRs were recorded in 1959. A copy of the 1959 CNRs have been submitted for your review as Exhibit 7. When comparing the current CNRs with those proposed by the Planning Board in the site plan approval as Exhibit 1, you will see that the town has adopted a much more robust and comprehensive set of standard CNRs for such applications over the years that better serves the town's interests. The 1959 CNRs have become obsolete and outdated. Nonetheless, we note that the 15-foot landscape buffer that's required under those CNRs have been incorporated into the site plan. Accordingly, there will be no detriment, nor detriment or any negative impact from the board's lifting of these 1959 CNRs. Although the planning memo referenced number 6 of the 1959 CNRs and the requirement that all signs comply with the town's sign ordinance, it should be noted that the town's updated CNRs from the Planning Board contains identical, if not superior, language. Number 6 of the Planning Board CNRs state, "All buildings, structures, signs, fencing, and landscaping shall be maintained in accordance with all applicable codes and ordinances of the Town of Babylon, and violations thereof may be prosecuted and enforced in the same manner as provided therein." While we understand the Planning Department's concerns regarding the proposed signage, which we have discussed, we respectfully disagree with the assertion that the lifting of the CNR should be delayed until those items are resolved. The Planning Board and the applicant have already agreed to even more comprehensive language regarding the required compliance with the code. At this time, I'd like to call Christopher Tartaglia of High Point Engineering to discuss the site plan, site design, and the proposed signage.
Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the applicant, Chris Tartaglia from High Point Engineering, 1860 Walt Whitman Road, Melville, New York.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
What would you like to tell us?
Hansley's done a great job of talking about the proposed development. There's just a few points that I want to underscore because the existing and proposed development are drastically different, and Hansley mentioned the word improvements, and indeed, that's really what I want to highlight. Starting with access, right now there are two full movement curb cuts on Comac Road, two full movement curb cuts on Bay Shore Road, and most importantly, one curb cut on Crown Street. The proposed development will consolidate access on Comac Road to one entry and exit single curb cut, and similarly, on Bay Shore Road, there will be one right-in, right-out curb cut. Most importantly, we are closing off all access to Crown Street, which is a residential street. We are locating the building in a point such that the rear of the building will now face Crown Street, and there's a very, very robust landscape buffer proposed along Crown Street. What that will do effectively is really moderately change the view that the folks that live on Crown Street see. As is indicated in one of the handouts, we actually have a view facing northwest, basically what the neighbors would see, and essentially, all they're seeing are a very robust set of trees and landscaping. The building is going to be barely visible from that roadway, so we believe that's one of the key components and elements of this proposal. Notably also, we started this application for Bola somewhere around the early part of 2019, and the application and the design has gone through several iterations in close working relationship with the folks in planning. Notably, there were six pump islands proposed when we had initially started the project. In noting that we needed a more robust buffer along the southerly residential lot line, we elected to reduce the number of pump islands down to four, which actually mirrors that which exists today at the site. The building itself was also reduced in size down to the 2,500 square feet and change that's proposed now. And I think the... One of the biggest, really the biggest improvements that we have here is the landscaping. While there is green space and tree line along the southerly lot line, there's very little along the periphery and the other roadways, the main roadways on the site. As you can see from the screen, there is a significant greening up of the property. And I believe also, as Hansley has mentioned, Bola has several other locations within the township, and I think all would agree that they really do a, probably a first-in-class job of maintaining their facilities, particularly with regard to cleanliness and landscaping. Beyond that, there's all new underground storage tanks being installed. They are being located along the corner of Comac Road and Bay Shore Road. There'll be a brand-new septic system in full compliance with Suffolk County Health Department installed. There's a drainage system being installed, which is in full compliance with the town engineering standards. And notably, which I don't think I did mention yet, is we do have Suffolk County Department of Public Works approval for access from both of the county roadways here. So they have reviewed and approved the plan as drawn. That's really the overview that I had. I'm sure there will be questions either from the board and/or from the residents, and I'm happy to answer those questions as need be.
Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Amanda LaRosa with Stonefield Engineering, 584 Broadway, Suite 310, New York, New York. As I mentioned, I'm with Stonefield Engineering, we're the traffic and parking consultants for the applicant. My firm had prepared the traffic impact...
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
My firm had prepared a traffic impact study as part of the site plan application. That study had been reviewed by one of the town's consultants, Leroy Engineering, and that was part of the site plan approval that we had gained in August of last year. I'd like to bring your attention to the justification of the parking variance included in that study. The town code does require a total of 13 spaces. We are proposing a total of 10 stalls in support of this ask of a variance of three stalls. We've conducted some parking observations at similarly sized Bolas on Long Island. Those observations showed that a maximum parking demand of about six vehicles is expected at a site of this size, and therefore, we are pretty confident that the proposed 10 stalls would be sufficient to support this site. With that, I'll take any questions or turn it back to council.
Okay. Any question? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions from the board, I'm sure our experts can assist.
Turn hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
Oh, I just want to be a little clear on my... This is a Shell station currently, right?
Correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was an Exxon station, I think, prior to that? We're talking about the same place? Or Getty?
I believe it was Getty at one time. I was looking at historical pictures on Google today. It was Getty and then a Luke Oil, and then I believe a Shell after that.
And so, in layman's terms, we have a building here now that has a convenience store in it now. We're knocking that down, putting up a new, as Bola does, market in the back, and then more islands, you said, as gas pumps.
Correct.
I have... The dumpster is going to be... Is that where... How many employees are going to be working here?
I believe it's two. Two employees will be working at this site.
At any time. And then what are the hours of operation?
24 hours.
It is 24 hours.
Yes.
Is it currently 24 hours?
Yes, it is currently 24 hours.
Well, two employees are not going to be working 24 hours. Where are they parking? Is the proposed parking for the employees is in front of the dumpsters?
I'll call Chris Tartaglia back up to kind of walk through the trash enclosure.
So we don't have employee stalls delineated, but that would make sense to have them sort of off to the side.
That's what it says here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what we do. You're right, because the town typically doesn't like stalls in front of the dumpsters. That's correct. But one thing I would note, that the reality of the convenience store workers is that largely they're minimum wage jobs, and it is quite common that they don't drive. They're often from the community. They can either walk or take public transit. Some do drive, some do not. But I think as our traffic engineer has indicated, and there's been some pretty in-depth studies at Bola's locations, there's certainly a robust amount of them on Long Island. Really, the parking demand at the stores of this size are in the 5 to 6 range at the busiest points. One of the things that I think perhaps most of the members of the board, or at least some of them do, and I know that I do as well, when I fuel up and I need to run inside to get something from the store, I kind of leave my car at the pump and I run in. When I was getting, and I do frequent gas stations a lot, I've got a bit of a gas guzzler automobile. So I'm at least once or twice a week at a gas station, and I can't remember the last time I parked in front. I'm always parked at the pump, I get gas, and combine that trip with whatever I need from inside. So that's where the gist of the 5 to 6 stalls in total comes from. So providing 10 would account for those two employees. And generally speaking, in the overnight hours or the later hours when the traffic slows down, that would be down to one employee inside the building, but two is really the max during the day.
I've done both. I run in and I park in front. I think we all have.
Those guys, huh?
At least we're walking, unlike the last folks who don't get out of their car.
You were paying attention before.
As far as the sign, the only thing I want to compare this to is on Sunrise Highway in Kopek, he's got a sign that big, and I can see the thing from Massapequa, which is where my gym is, so that's how I come from there. So it's a little offensive, honestly. It's, you know, that size, that big, that magnitude. I don't know.
I can speak to that. So we did talk with Bola before this meeting when we got the planning memo, and we noted the comparison to the recent approval by this board for the Deer Park location, which looked for the height to be brought down more in conformance of 20 feet or lower in reduction of the price sign. And one thing I would just mention is that, so the sign that we're showing on the plan is actually the sign in place at the facility today. We don't have any evidence of permits of that, so we wouldn't make any representations to that effect. So the sign that's there today is not growing, it's not getting any taller, it's remaining where it is. But that said, we have the authorization of Bola to comply with that memo from planning or the recommendation, and we can reduce that sign to a height of below 20 feet, 19 foot 7 inches, in fact. And the area of the sign would go down drastically to 83.1 square feet, if that would be acceptable to the board. That's total area of the sign, whereas now it's proposed at 100 and change.
I have which?
Okay. Yeah, I'm confused because the...
They picked up the price sign, I think, only.
Number five. It's increased area for price sign is 53.9 square feet now. So I think that's what they're looking. Yeah, that's what...
Oh, I see. Okay, so that's...
So we got to combine them for the total. Then I think that the issue becomes the price sign at 53.90.
Right. Yeah, so he's pulling it up on the screen. That's great. So the way that Babylon code works is somewhat unique in that there's really two codes for the same sign. There's the price component, and then there's the logo components. So the planning memo mentions the fact that the price sign itself, which is the center sign there, starting with regular down to diesel, is the... sign there, starting with regular down to diesel, is the 53.1 square foot portion. The proposed sign would have a price sign component, or the one that we're offering tonight, would have the price sign component limited to 26.1. So we'd make a drastic reduction, not only in the height, but in the area. So the price sign would go down to 26.1 square feet. The overall sign area at 83.1 would consist of a 43-square-foot logo and a 12.7-square-foot BOLA market.
I'd like to, I think we'd look favorably on that.
And I have a handout if you'd like to see what that would look like. I know we've inundated you with paper tonight, so I didn't want to do so, but you're welcome to it. I'm sorry? Just under 20 feet, we've got 19 foot, seven and change, if we could just maybe call it a just-under-20, or 20-max?
Well, we've got to call it what it is to get the variance correct.
Okay. 19 foot, eight inches, just because 15 and 16th inches is so close to a foot.
And the total was 83?
83.1 total area. And again, that's inclusive of a 26.1 square foot price sign.
Can I see the handout?
Happy.
So there's only two prices on the proposed?
That's correct. That's how we've achieved the drop in area and height.
What is the total height of the sign?
The proposed sign would be 19 foot, seven, 19 eight, I'm sorry, because it's seven and change, 19 foot, eight inches.
15, 16, 19 eight.
We're engineers, forgive us.
I'll make a motion to amend the application, 22246, on the height, number two variance, increase sign height from 15 to 19.8.
19 feet, eight inches.
Huh?
19 feet, eight inches.
19, yeah, 19.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to amend variance number five, increase area for price sign to, from 12 square feet to 26.1 square feet.
Second.
1 inch.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So does that change number three, I guess, right, increase ground? So the logo sign remains the same?
40, let's see, I'm trying to think where they got 40 from.
40, 43, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that...
The logo sign.
Saying 40 is what's required by code. We're saying 55.
Yeah, 55.8, right.
Oh, it's both those signs, both of them together?
Okay. All right. Now where are we? You can lift the government's restriction.
I have a minute. I was trying to do the amendment, so.
But I also want to, the Comac, on the Comac side, that area is always extremely congested. Do you guys, on the traffic study, did you guys, I feel like it should almost be a one-way.
The traffic study has been reviewed in depth by a consulting engineer selected by the town as part of our site plan approval. And we've also submitted to Suffolk County, who has jurisdiction over the roadway. So I would respectfully say that this has been reviewed in depth.
Yeah.
That's how it is on Bay Shore Road. You can ask for it to be the same on Comac Road.
Right, that's, so is it a right-turn only?
It is. On Bay Shore, it is, yes.
Not on Bay Shore, on Comac.
Oh, on Comac Road as well, yes.
Right in, right out.
It is?
People just don't abide by it, but that has nothing to do with them.
It's a whole different story.
It's there. It's a double yellow line. What about for vehicles coming from Crown Street? How is their visibility going to be to the left?
On Crown Street? We're not affecting Crown Street at all in the proposed condition. We're actually closing the driveway on Crown Street. So all of the visibility lines that are there today...
Yeah, but you now have new shrubbery on the corner of Crown Street and Bay Shore Road.
Yeah, all of that will be in compliance with height regulations, so nothing will be tall enough to obstruct motorist view within the sightlines.
Okay.
People coming out of Crown Street, I...
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah. So they'll have sightlines to be able to see to get out?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I know. It's a little, though.
Sorry.
I can wear my hair in me.
HR Road is right only and Comac Road is right only?
Yeah. They're both on, yeah. Right in, right out.
No, there's a double, are there some double line on Comac Road? Before you get to Comac Road, you can just come out and try to make the left here.
Yeah, it's a right turn only.
The triangle on the top needs a right turn only, meaning to the left. Are you talking about on Bay Shore Road? You're talking about that right turn there?
Right where the cursor is.
Oh, they put a little line on there.
Yeah, maybe you want to put one of those on Comac Road?
That's what I'm trying to say. Like, we need something that...
That probably helps to make them go right instead of going left there.
Yeah, so the reason why we don't have one there, folks, is we have to get a 60-foot-long tractor trailer into these driveways to fill up the tanks, and it would run over. And that was debated, again ad nauseam, by the county. Part of the last four years we've spent on this has been working with the DPW to get an access scheme that they approve. And they're pretty tough customers, so we've been, we've really worked this traffic scheme pretty heavily.
I've seen them run it over.
I'm just saying. We can't design it that way, I guess.
Just saying.
Okay. Would any of you guys want to be heard on this application? Come on up.
Just need your name and address for the record.
Rita Hansen, 16 Cherubina Lane, North Babylon, New York.
Okay. And you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Okay. What would you like to tell us?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I want to thank you for asking about the Comac Road entrance. I appreciate that. We live on Cherubina, which is a street, ooh, sorry, honey, way back, you know, it's the first street.
What a first street.
But we're, we can't even get out of our street as it is.
Never, never. It's always congested over there.
It's not worse since the...
Yeah, let's, but now, so thank you for bringing that up.
I just need you to name an address for the record.
Jeffrey Hansen, 16 Cherubina Lane, North Babylon, New York.
You affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, thank you. So my other question is, if they could only make a right turn when they come out, and people probably won't be doing that because they're not going to realize that's what they're supposed to do, or because they're going to ignore it because it does happen, reality. I'm sorry, I don't want to sound like I'm negative, but it's reality. Is it possible that the planning for the trucks to come in from Comac Road, which is a main road, I mean, from Bay Shore Road, which is a main road, to do their deliveries?
We'll ask the applicant, okay?
Excuse me?
We'll ask the applicant when they come, we call them back up.
Oh, I thought planning would be...
Okay. Yeah, we don't do back and forth. It's like, because we're recording.
Okay, okay, okay. So that was one question I had. Maybe they could deliver from the other main road rather than from our little road that's now always congested. And then maybe they could put in that triangle that you were talking about. Just a thought.
The tanks are on the corner of Bay Shore and Comac?
To what?
Yes.
So they're going to be in that circle of green in the corner there?
Can you do a second time so I can get my stuff done? Yeah, be a second speaker, because I'm nervous enough. Okay, the other question I had was, yeah, I talked about the driveway, the sign, the sign that you were doing figures with that I didn't understand, and we couldn't really hear too well back there, is that going to be larger than the sign that's there now?
No, it's going to be smaller.
Is it going to be small, okay. Because they had mentioned something about it was comparable to the other signs at other gas stations, and other gas stations are not in the middle of a residential horseshoe that this one is. So I'm glad that it's going to be smaller. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Because I wanted to comment. I know that another comment was made that the investors have put a lot of money into this. Yes, they have. But the investors are the ones who are making, you know, something out of this investment. The residents aren't. So it's not going back into the community, it's going into them. And I think that's important. It is surrounded all by residents. And in this picture here that he has in his lap, if you, and I know you know, you're aware of it, there are houses to the right, the left, and along the back of it. It isn't a residential spot. And I appreciate them taking us into consideration. As it is, if you're familiar with the spot, the building there now is housing the pumps around the outside and the convenience store on the inside. And it already is fairly tight. I can't even imagine them having two foundations there. But I guess they have it all figured out, and that's great. And I'm sorry that the people that live right next to it are not here to represent themselves, so I'm just going to say it, even though it doesn't affect me. Those dumpsters are right next to somebody's house, and he's going to have rats, and I know that for sure. Just saying. But that's up to them to have come and talked about themselves. And the last thing, I just don't want to sound disrespectful, and I'm sorry if I do, but something was mentioned about people who are going to be working there are getting minimum wage and probably be walking because they can't afford a car. And I thought that was a little hurtful. I thought that was a little disrespectful. I just wanted to get that off my chest.
Thank you. Would you like to tell us anything?
Okay, let's see, a couple of things. Well, they're talking about putting all these trees around. Soon as the winter comes, they're going to shed their leaves, and they're not going to make any difference. Are they going to be able to put any kind of evergreens?
Yeah, I don't believe they're trees like that. They're going to be things that, you know, evergreen-type stuff, it's not going to shed.
Oh, okay. The corner of Crown and Bay Shore, I don't know if that, how far up these bushes are coming, because it may block the view to get out, if you're trying to make a left out of there.
Trying to make a left out of Crown, you mean?
Right, if you're coming out of Crown onto Bay Shore.
There's, there's sight, yeah, because they don't come all the way out.
There's a sidewalk there.
So it's coming back?
So the sidewalk, yeah.
Okay.
It's at least seven feet back.
Okay, I guess. And then that left out onto, so they're saying they're only going to make, you're going to try and make it so it's only a right out onto Comac Road?
There are going to be signs there to say you can only make a right turn out of both exit entrances.
Okay. So those arrows are for...
Yes.
Whether you're coming in into it or not, but then out is only right?
Exactly.
And then the sidewalks are still in place all the way around?
Sidewalk, yes.
Okay. I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard? You weren't here in the beginning, but come on up, I'll let you, go ahead. You've been here a while.
By Cherubina, where we live, there's a sign that says, "Don't block the box." And you're going to have a sign saying, "Don't make a left." They don't abide by the sign. They still block the box. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Hold on. I think we've got somebody else.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Yeah, I have some concerns about some of the...
I need, before you do anything, I need you to name and address for the record, please?
I'll be honest with you. First of all, I think it's too much and too little space. It truly is, and I hope you all consider that. I'm interested in one part, the Crown Street exit.
The Crown Street exit?
Is there an exit, this exit on Crown Street?
No.
You're removing that.
You're removing that.
It doesn't go onto Crown Street.
Not anymore?
No.
It's closed off.
That was a concern, because a lot of people would swing around and go to Crown, and go down Crown, and come right out into our neighborhood...
Yeah.
...to go through Cherubina Lane. It's a true road, and go right out to Comac Road. There's a lot of lazy people in North Babylon. It would be a very convenient way of exiting, you know. Well, that was my main concern, though. I thought there was an exit onto Crown Street. Because why did they need that extra space on Crown Street? My wife had a, she says, you know, you give them an inch, they take a yard. You know, it's, they're trying to do too much with too little. My neighbor, that's my neighbor next door, we concur.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it affects all of us, and it will affect our neighborhood, truly.
And what's your name?
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Do you need his name on record?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Oh, yes. August Schaefer, 22 Cherubina Lane, North Babylon, New York, 11703.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your indulgence.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
All right, just one more quick question. Are they going to have a Burger King in there, or?
No.
It's just going to be a gas station with just snacks?
Hold on. We can't do this like this, but, okay. So we got your question.
Okay.
Come on back up, have a seat. Thanks.
Thank you. So just answering back to front, so they are going to have what's called a Tim Hortons. This is a coffee and doughnut offering, primarily morning Danish coffee, an egg sandwich on an English muffin, things like that. So no cooking. That cooking is actually done via what's called proofing, which is more or less microwaving and toasting. There's no open flame, no hamburgers or anything like that. Just with regard to neighborhood outreach, because, you know, BOLA does want to be a good neighbor, we did actually speak with both of the adjoining neighbors to the south. Neither had significant commentary, though I do recall Ms. Ordain, who is the one that fronts Comac Road, her real big concern, I guess, was that there might be a holiday or a hole in the fence, and that sometimes folks will, I don't know, cut through her property on the corner. And we just assured her that we're installing fencing that would address that. I don't know why somebody would cut through the front corner of her driveway when three feet over is the sidewalk, but nonetheless, we did address that. Lazy, perhaps. And the only other thing I would offer is I really appreciate these folks coming out tonight. I just, I was looking at the aerial photo, just as, I'm not sure what street they live on. I didn't see Chardane or...
Cherubina.
Cherubino?
Maybe you can do me a favor. When we adjourn the hearing, maybe you can go outside and talk to them and just, you know, take care of any concerns that they might have, you know?
We'd be happy to. Yeah, just want to find out where they live so we can see how we can help.
No problem. All right.
Thank you.
So... One more thing I'd like to note. So there was a comment that was raised regarding the issue of rat in the trash enclosure. I think there's one more thing we wanted to address with that. They actually came up as an issue after our planning board hearing. One of the neighbors made an issue about pest control being a problem. It was, we reached out, we had the pest control actually visit the site, take care of the existing issues, and we submitted a report to the planning board to their satisfaction, conditioned on the approval that we cleared up any issue that was currently existing with the rats.
Will you continue during construction to, you know, mitigate if necessary? Because that's where you might get it too.
Yes, absolutely. And as I'm sure Chris will kind of add on shortly. So the trash enclosure issue was actually a big issue that came up when we were trying to design the site originally. The trash enclosure was actually located to the north because we wanted to put it as far away from the residences as possible. But during our discussions with planning, there was actually some concerns about having a trash enclosure located along such a main road as Bay Shore Road and having visitors through our town kind of going back and forth and there being a trash enclosure on the front of the property was a concern. So in order to accommodate planning's recommendation, we actually had to shift it back to the south. So that was why the trash enclosure is actually located to the south, because originally that was not part of our plan, but we kind of had to make do with the unique lot configuration. And echoing Chris's point, I'm also appreciative that we have the neighbors from Charrabina here because I actually live on Leader Avenue, which is just south of Comac Road from the site. I actually pass the site every day on my way to work. Through my years working for this firm, doing this work, this is actually the closest Bola site that I've ever worked on that's close to my house. So also very concerned about how the site looks, how it comes out. Because as of right now, if I'm being honest, the site's not too great design-wise. It's not really pleasing to the eye. There's a lot of dead space and dead area. I know, as Chris mentioned, we did some outreach to the adjacent neighbors. One of the comments they made was that there was actually, because of the just empty open space, there are a lot of people who tend to congregate during the late hours and kind of keeps them up at night and it has become an issue. So with respect to the comment that we're doing a lot with a little space, we're actually trying to maximize the space to remove that issue, to remove the dead space, to avoid any kind of congregating or late-night activity that might be going on during the late hours. So overall, the proposed improvement will be significantly enhancing everyone affected, including myself as a nearby resident, as well as the rest of the community. So I'm not sure if Chris wanted to add anything else about the trash enclosure, but that was it for me.
So we're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. You'll get the decision in the mail. Thanks for coming down, everybody. Hope we answered your question. And they're going to, they're going to talk to you at the, now, after the meeting. So if you have other questions, maybe you can give them your card or whatever. So we'll take care of the neighbors, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah.
Old guy break.
Yeah, go ahead. What come to you? Yeah, relax.
You can sit.
What are you doing?
He's going to show it. He's going to talk to it.
Oh, good.
You could just take it outside because
Oh, we do have to go out, I'm sorry.
we're not adjourned yet. I have additional.
All right. This and this.
Did they fill out? Did those speakers fill out? Okay. Take it in?
Young girl guy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pamela Green, Office of the Town Attorney. The reserved matters tonight were four, five, nine, and 10. So if the board would like to give any direction or follow-up, or anything that they would like to see addressed on those, we await your comments.
Four?
Yes. I want to drive by again because I did drive by and it does look I saw the, what is it called? I didn't see the curb cut. That's what I'm saying. I didn't see the curb cut. So I'm going to go back and see if there's an actual curb cut because that's the only thing. But I did see the, like, makeshift
Pervious, they're, they're made like that.
Yeah.
That's what you put it down, so it's, and the grass grows through it so it doesn't look like a driveway.
They make them concrete, plastic, and wood.
But she's claiming that the reason why that was even there is for this work truck. But there was an additional truck. That's what I was trying to tell her. You're not just, it's not just used for this work truck that he hardly moves. There was an actual truck parked on this driveway. So he's using it for more than one year. So I'm going to go back there.
No, that's, that's the other problem.
Commercial vehicle in a residence over 5,000 pounds.
Town of Isla prohibits parking on vegetative matter. You can't park on vegetative matter, a front lawn.
There you go. But if he loves his tools, what, sell the truck? He'd love the truck.
Put him in a shed.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Basement, yeah.
Okay, so, and then number five?
Number five. So they're going to get us a new
New plans to show the smaller pool.
So we're going to hold that.
Okay. And then nine and 10? You wanted to take another drive-by, anyone?
It's way nicer than what's there now.
Yeah, right, exactly. They do a great job.
It's been a gas station for a long, long time, too. And Bola does a great job. They really do.
And the traffic that's there now has nothing to do with them because anytime I drive by, there's maybe one car in the parking lot.
In the parking lot, but what about Comac Road? Comac Road, this picture here shows you 10 cars lined up here.
But that's not going to change.
It has nothing to do with the gas station.
It has nothing to do with the gas station. I agree. However, making this a two-way entrance and exit, I feel like causes more traffic there. Why can't we make this a one-way just coming in?
I think probably two-way now.
One exit, yeah.
Did you want, I'm sure we had traffic respond, correct? Would you like them to provide a comment on that, whether or not?
If they close that down, they'll never get a truck in there.
What do you mean, close it down?
The trucks come from the LIE.
It doesn't need to be smaller. It just needs to be a one-way.
Right, she's recommending entrance, not an exit.
Entrance only, no exit? Well, and how's a truck going to get out of there? How's a truck going to get out of there?
The road looks wide. That road is very narrow. And then on the opposite side, that you guys are saying that the yellow lines are, it's a one-way. So of course, I don't think anyone's crossing over. You can't even get over to the other side to make a left. So it's always been make a right, but I just feel like it should
It's actually four lanes in that area.
Yeah, it is, but it's only one way going left. It's a right turn.
You're going to have a hard time making a left, even though there's a sign saying, "Don't make a left." But people make, and I've been guilty of it, yeah. Not there, but in other places. You're going to have a hard time getting across because there's always going to be cars there.
It's always ridiculous there. It's a right, a straight, and a left, all in.
Also, if they're getting a truck in that way, how are they getting a truck out of there?
Out of Bay Shore Road is the only way.
So he's going to have to run over, run over the
All of these houses are always, I know that they hate it.
Unless he backs it. Backs it out.
And he goes out that same way.
You wanted to give him, give us further comment on that?
I think he's right outside if you want.
Can we propose, just ask them if we can just do it entrance-only? Leave it just as wide as it is because that's their concern.
I think even if you do entrance-only, people are not
Yeah, people are still going to go out of it.
They're going to go in and out as they please. Even if you put one way, they arrive. Whatever you want to put there, they're still going to use access to that driveway to their own convenience.
There is no convenience, do you mean that? That's what I'm saying.
They're going to do it anyways.
They can't. There's no way to do it.
Not to go left, but to just exit anyways, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Probably can't make a left out of there, really.
Yeah, it's hard to make a left, but people are still going to enter and exit.
I think, though, if you're making a right there and right there.
Would you like us to get the comments from the traffic study?
Okay, but I want to go left, but I got to make the right, so where am I going to make my U-turn?
You make a right and make a left out to Bay Shore Road.
Okay. In that case, shall we move on? Page nine of the agenda, we have Taco Bell of America, which is adjourned until March 9th. Bringing us to page 10 of the agenda. As you noted at the beginning of the hearing, those three applications were going to be the two applications on page 10 are going to be adjourned until March 30th. Regarding the request for an extension of time on 7-Eleven, I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Riley to bring you up to date on that. Moving on to page 12 of the agenda. Peter Tifoli, we are waiting for the homeowner to cut back the driveway. Page 13 of the agenda, 22-212 Ronald Hernandez. The expediter is not being at all responsive to numerous forms of outreach.
How long have we been trying to communicate?
When did we hear this? December 15th? Nothing, you're getting nothing from them?
No, we have no response.
How do you know? They don't answer.
Could we contact the owner?
Oh, they are coming in?
Not about this application. They saw it then a couple of weeks ago and they told them to respond to council's email.
So the expediter comes in for other applications, but not this one? Why is he not responding to this application?
Can we send him an email that, you know, if we don't have any response, then we'll just move the application or?
I certainly can.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to page 14 of the, 14 of the agenda. This is 22-216 A Angela Holdings. We will note in your correspondence, you now have the economic analysis prepared by the Office of Stephen Kreutz. So that we can have total transparency between planning and council. We are recommending that the board re-advertise this hearing for the purpose of having that presentation given to you orally at a public hearing where the public can attend. The board I'm sorry?
For that only, right?
Yes. The board will be able to ask any questions of Mr. Nelson regarding the report. It will also allow the board to put back in the first variance, which was deleted, which was now to diminish the front yard setback from 10 to 7 feet. That would be re-advertised and also heard. So the entire presentation would remain open. The part of the past record would come forward as if we were continuing the hearing from December 15th. After that time, the board will allow two weeks for the public to make any comments on the report and then council's office to respond. And at that time, the record will be closed and the board can move on the application.
So we're not going to hear public comment that night?
My recommendation would be that the purpose is for the appraiser to present the report to the board. The board to ask any questions regarding that appraiser. Not to open it up for the public to question the expert because it's really not the forum. The forum is for the public to question the board, not the expert.
And then we'll hold the record open and make that presentation to, available if somebody wants it.
Correct. But this way, the board is totally transparent that they received this new information. They're having it presented in a public forum for all the world to see and hear. And rather than having you read a 15-page report submitted as correspondence tonight. Okay, so if that is acceptable, we're going to be moving to put that on the agenda from March 30th.
We need a motion or just?
No, I just wanted to bring the board up to speed with recommendations. Okay, moving on to page 15 of the agenda. It's 22-224 Jose Mejia, and I believe we're still waiting for correct plans.
Yes, we spoke to the architect again last week. They need to match the survey with the revised house plan. He got the survey, but then it's still incorrect. So we're waiting on another revised survey that he is working on.
The bottom of page 15, 22-234 Car Star Auto Space. I believe they have submitted an application to legalize the barbed wire, but it now needs to be reviewed.
Yes, they submitted. They're going through the review process. Hopefully, they will have the letter determined eventually.
Page 16 of the agenda, the application is 22-238 Educational Bus Transportation. The correspondence from their attorney has now been added to your packet. It's item number one, as requested by Ms. McCullough. They provided more information about the school districts they intend to service from this location. So you have that email in your packet, number one. However, this is still waiting for their traffic plan to be reviewed by a town traffic expert. So we're continuing to hold until that's done. Moving on to page 17. The application is 22-241. So you will recall that you got updated photos on this last week. This property is located in West Babylon. You were able to see the updated photos. Planning had concerns about the expansion of the driveway and had recommended that if it were to be approved, the front portico and rear-covered porch not be enclosed. And if the benches were ever removed, they be replaced in a conforming location. So I believe Ms. McCullough wanted to drive by that once again.
I believe at the hearing, the expediter said they were willing to cut back some of the front driveway. And that's opposed to the end plan. And they have not. I have sent numerous emails to the expediter towards waiting on the plan. I've not heard back.
Thank you.
Where's the expediter on that?
Moving on to page 18 of the agenda, we have Rollrite Towing. And no application has been received for the trailers yet, which was promised promptly at the last meeting.
If you recall the hearing, they did say they've been renewing it, which they have, but it has not been renewed in the last 33, 40 years. I did send them the renewal letter that we had sent. I sent them a copy of the application so they can submit it. And all that has been sent over and hopefully they will be responding soon. I know we also wanted to drive by here. Didn't. I'll be there tomorrow. But you did get correspondence from the neighbor. Yeah, I did see that.
Which brings us to our final page of correspondence. Item number one is the email from Victor Emanuolo regarding the proposed uses of the buses at educational bus transportation. Item number two is a letter from Mr. Hubbard, the attorney for 7, what was it, 7-Eleven? Requesting the extension. So that is